Good evening and welcome to the Milpitas Unified School District Special Board Meeting on March 2nd, 2021. My name is Chris Norwood. I'm the 2021 Board President. Welcome to the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance, participation, and involvement in our educational proceedings, which are currently being conducted virtually pursuant to executive orders in 25-2520 and N-2920 issued by the California Governor Gavin Newsom. So if you would like to address the board on any item or subject that does not appear on the agenda, please join us via Zoom and click the Raise Your Hand button, and you will be called upon in order. Please keep your hand raised until you are called on. When it is your turn, please state your name, address, and if you have students in the district before you make your public comment, you will have two minutes to speak to make your public comment. Those wishing to speak during a specific agenda item will be called on at the appropriate time. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialists will activate and unmute speakers in turn. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. Persons who do not respond when prompted will forfeit their comment for that item. Now, members of the public may address the board on any subject not on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an un-agendized item, no response is required from the board and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note the law prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during public comment portion of the agenda except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker. The board may however instruct the superintendent to look into the matter or place it on a future agenda. Thank you for your participation in the civic engagement. I'd like to take a moment to talk about those last two paragraphs that are a part of the Brown Act and the rules that we abide by as governing board members. It says, "Members of the public may address the board on any subject on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an un-agendized item, no response is required from the board or the district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future agenda." So we're all clear on the fact that if someone from the public wants to speak on something on tonight's agenda, because it's un-agendized, no response is required from the board or the district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct, here is what we're able to do. We're able to instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Addition, it says, "Please note that law prohibits members of the board from commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker. The board may however instruct the superintendent to look into the matter or place it on a future agenda." So let's be clear on some things. What that means is that when the public makes their comments, we are not to engage by law in any discussion we're able to ask for to be added to the agenda or we're able to be asked for clarification. In the event we get into some discussion, we open up the possibility of information being shared inappropriately or unprofessionally during the exchange, which potentially makes one or more of the board members liable during that type of discussion. I wanted to make sure that we were very clear on that is one of the reasons why we're not instructed to get into a conversation during public comment. You can ask for question, we can ask for clarification, or we can have the superintendent agendize something at a later meeting. Thank you. Individuals who require special accommodations, contact the superintendent's office at least two days in advance before the meeting date. All disposable public records, all disclosable public records related to an agenda item for discussion in open session of a regular meeting of the Board of Education and distributed to all or majority of the board members less than 72 hours before that meeting shall be made available for the public inspection at the same time the writing is distributed to all of the majority of the board members. Any such writings should be made for public inspection during business hours in the superintendent's office, Building 11331 East Calaveras Boulevard, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Far in technical difficulties, such writings will also be posted on the district website at www.musd.org. This meeting is being broadcast live on Zoom and YouTube and is being recorded. All recordings are posted on our district website. If you have any safety-related concerns regarding your likeness or comments being broadcast or recorded, please contact the superintendent's office prior to meeting. Wow. Now, let's call the meeting to order. Board Member Norwood here. Vice President Yip Tron. Board Clerk Han Lee Yan.
Here.
Board Member Michael Tsai.
Here.
Board Member Min No.
Here.
And our student reps are not here for this board meeting. We're on item three, review and approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Your agenda.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Board Member Norwood, yes. Board Member Yip Tron.
Yes.
Board Member Lin.
Yes.
Board Member Tsai.
Yes.
Board Member No.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call vote of all approving moving forward the agenda. Next item, Scott, flag salute. Since we're celebrating Women's History Month, Norma.
Please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for all. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
Awesome. Comments from the public. Again, members of the public may address the board on any subject not on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an un-agendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. If you would like to address the board on any item on the agenda or one that does not appear on the agenda, please join us via Zoom. Click the Raise Your Hand button and you will be called upon in order. When it is your turn, please state your name, address, and any students you have in the district before making your public comment. You will have two minutes to make the public comment. Those wishing to speak during a specific agenda item will be called upon at the appropriate time. Thank you for your participation in this civic engagement. Item number six.
President Norwood.
Yes, sir.
We have two public comments. We have two hands raised.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go ahead with the first one, which is Ted Firestone. I'm going to enable his audio and unmute yourself and you'll, you're good to go.
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
All right. That probably happens at every meeting. All right. Thank you all for having me here today. Thank you, Chris, for allowing me the time to speak to you all. My name again is Ted Firestone. My son is Ruben Firestone in first grade at Rose Elementary. I live on 2150 Lacy Drive here in Milpitas. I've been a resident here for a little over three years. I've always been a big supporter of teachers and public education. I must say, I was very impressed by the early organization I saw at Rose School, getting the remote learning up and going. I know the teachers and administrators there did a great job, especially in the early stages. As the pandemic has worn on, I've been living in a three-generation home with my 70-year-old father-in-law, who's going to work every day at the post office, and I've seen a lot of people making sacrifices and, you know, accepting a degree of unknown risk. My reason for speaking is my concern about the lack of a plan or timeline for a return to bringing the kids back to school. CDC has said that the schools should open, and I've noticed other schools in the district are already opening. Other schools across the country have been open for quite a while, and other schools around the world with similar COVID rates to this area have been open for quite a while without evidence of becoming super-spreader locations. As someone who's always had an interest in and admiration for public education, I'm aware of the damage of kids being out of school can do to these kids and especially at-risk kids. During normal times, it's usually the summer when kids without stable home lives most fall behind. To me, this proves how valuable the in-classroom experience is for so many kids. The evidence is there that kids are learning less remotely. The evidence is there that dropout rates are higher and depression rates are higher with remote learning. The evidence is there that COVID is not a statistically meaningful risk to children or teachers without underlying conditions. My question is, how are we accounting for the cost of not reopening the schools? How many additional kids have dropped out of Milpitas schools that would not have otherwise? How many kids are developing long-lasting physical and mental health conditions that may not have otherwise? These are members of our community, and based on what we now know, I think we are needlessly allowing more of these kids to fall through the cracks. These are kids that will be living in Milpitas for decades to come. I'm aware of some of the temporary measures the district has put in place, but it just can't measure up to what in-person learning can provide. I have backed teachers my entire life. I value public education. Look at the timing here. I value public education. The schools provide education, community, stability, support for working parents, socialization, nutrition, and exercise in schools where many young adults can find a sense of meaning through various clubs and sports teams. I feel over the past few months, you've neglected all of this at the expense of the most important future members of community. Tomorrow, my 70-year-old father-in-law will get up in the morning and go into work at his job at the post office like he has done every day during this challenging period. I got five more seconds. I ask that MUSD does everything possible to accelerate the process in which our teachers are upholding their responsibility to the community. The framework on how to do so is already there, laid out by the many schools that have been open this whole time. The only thing we are lacking now is the will. I know I speak for many other parents in this city. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Firestone.
Thank you, Ted. The next hand raised is Laura Poldin. I'm going to enable your audio.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. It's me again. Hi, Mr. Norwood. Superintendent Jordan and board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name again is Laura Poldin, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Zanker Elementary. I am here tonight to talk to you about the recent directive of demanding state testing during a global pandemic. I did not have time to poll the entire district teacher population, but I'm speaking with certainty that I represent over 80% of them when I say that forcing us to administer and forcing the students to take a high-stakes test this year is nothing shy of ridiculous. I have attended every single town hall meeting this year, as well as served on your COVID task force, and without fail have participated in so many social-emotional activities that I couldn't count them all. Mrs. Jordan, you end your emails with talk of self-care, making connections, being good to ourselves. You all love to claim the culture of "we" every step of the way. We play music, we lighten the mood, we include pictures of team members doing things with their families, and just last week, we even talked about making connections as a district team. That is all well and good, but it is clearly gaslighting. You have all preached to us day in and day out about how important our mental health is and how important our own students' mental health is. How can I tell my students that what they are doing is enough? Surviving in a pandemic while stuck at home is enough when clearly it's not enough? We must now test them. Let's see how much you learned when you were home with your five siblings in a bedroom trying to get on Zoom with an outdated Chromebook with sketchy internet. I can confidently say my students, unless their families help them, won't do as well this year as normal years. And now you can pay me the big bucks instead of the Sback Consortium. I don't understand how every year it is the most rigid thing to give a test in our classroom. We have to shred paper. We have to lock up our phones, but now this year, it's all okay. I'm bringing students back to class on Monday, and they have been out of the classroom for over almost a year. There is so much anxiety and trauma that comes along with that for all parties involved, and I hope that we can really rethink this, and I'm very interested to know what Sandra and our social-emotional learning team has to say about this. Clearly, this agenda has been served to the public with a parent square message, so inevitably, we will administer this assessment. But please know, your teachers and students know how we really feel about mental health. Parents, you have the choice to opt out. For any parents that are listening, you have the choice to opt out. You just need to write a letter to the administrator. And all staff listening, I encourage you to check out Teachers for Good Trouble. Thank you.
Superintendent Jordan, on the issue of testing, is there any information that you can share in terms of the district's efforts on this matter in comparison to the information that the teachers in the community has received?
Yes, as the Secretary of the Santa Clara County Schools Superintendent, I wrote a letter that was drafted together by all superintendents. We shared with superintendents across the state as well as with the AXA Curriculum Instruction Assessment Council. That is the Association of School Administrators in California. And the letters illustrated the reasons why testing at this time of the year would not be advisable, and instead, we could use the time to invest in furthering our students' learning, planning for extended learning through the year, as well as planning for next year. And at the State Board of Education last Tuesday, I believe it was, I spoke on behalf of the superintendents of the county asking the State Board of Education to put forth a blanket waiver request to the federal government. At the end of that board meeting, the Board of the State Board of Education elected to provide some flexibilities, but they need to ask the federal government for those flexibilities, and the flexibilities that they've asked for are extending the length of the state testing through July 30th, which is not something that I would recommend that we do here in Milpitas. They also are recommending that we have teachers either administer the test in the classrooms in person or online, even though we also shared in my public comments as well as in the letter that there will be a requirement for cameras, and we assume that many parents will not want their child watched by a camera, may then opt out, and so what the State Board did say is that they are requesting a waiver from the federal government for the participation rate. And finally, we also shared that across the state, there are many districts, including our own, who don't necessarily have the digital devices that have the required browser on them, and we've had 2,500 on orders since November and to date have received 158. Now, we do have a Plan B, but we are not alone in that. So that is the effort that the district has made with the state and an appeal for them to request from the federal government a waiver of the state testing.
So this is an item that I want to bring back to the next agenda. Because we did receive the parent square and making sure that all the information is out there about what the district has done, and also besides what the district has done is the ability to speak to Laura's question about where does the district stand. We understand what our options are, and you had mentioned the fact that there is a, you called it a limit?
Flex, limited flexibilities are what the State Board of Education are requiring, are requesting from the federal government. One of which is to extend the testing year so that it doesn't end at the end of the school year, but instead goes through the summer months through July 30th.
Okay. Yeah, so we, I would like to have that item come back with data from the instructors in terms of what is, what, how do we measure, assess, and I understand that Laura called them tests, and they can be seen that way, but they're also, they also can be seen as what they're called, as assessments, and understanding the impact of this unique, this almost this fully unique year of being in distance learning. And I heard Laura say that she is concerned that her students aren't going to perform or do as well. And I know that there may be some of that anxiety or concern from teachers and parents as well, but we have to put it out there and we have to figure out, at least this is my opinion, and I like, this is speaking directly to the superintendent. I would like to know how we would potentially be able to measure the learning this year in this unique environment so that we can learn from it.
So what alternative assessments we have in addition to the state assessment assessments that were required to administer?
Okay. And how the teachers are assessing? And how we utilize that?
Okay. So how do teachers use the data that they have and that they create in their classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
If you're done, Chris, I had a few points I'd like to ask for clarification from Laura.
Okay.
So Laura, you mentioned you're not the only one who feels this way, that even though you haven't done a survey, I wanted to ask if your views are in any way reflective of the views of the Milpitas Teachers Association or the principal of Zanker Elementary?
I will have to re-enable her to speak. Hold on one second.
Thank you, Scott, for being my enabler.
There you go.
I cannot speak to MTA and I cannot speak to my school site admin. I can speak to a very strong group of teachers that I know, but again, I don't have cold, hard data for you there, Mr. Tsai.
It's all right. Thank you for sharing. Going back to what Chris was saying to put this back on the agenda for agendizing this on a future meeting, I would suggest that maybe we try and gather some data or survey from amongst the teachers and parents on how they feel about this, and we can incorporate that.
All right. So is that like something that I should do then? I mean?
Laura, no.
I really don't want to.
You've done your part. You've
Thank you.
brought us, you've spoken during the public comment, and the board is, has the ability to ask for clarification and then direct the superintendent if this is an item that we feel
Got it.
or that we've confirmed falls within the scope of our ability or our responsibility.
Got it. I mean, I can say that state superintendent, Mr. Thurman, also agrees with me, but, you know, he doesn't like Milpitas, so.
Thank you. That's good to know because he does set the tone across the state.
Other any other public comments, Scott?
We have no more public comments this time.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for making those public comments in number, item number six, MUSD 2018-2021 Strategic Goals. Again, we are going to keep on the theme of we're celebrating women this month, and I think I see, was that Lori Armino? Oh, Lori, how are you? Could we pull up the strategic goals so she can share those with us?
They, I'm sharing my screen. They should be on there.
This is, okay. "We will build a culture of 'we' that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. And identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments."
Thank you. Item seven, Board Group Agreements. Board Group Agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. As I want to accelerate, I want to just maximize the time on the, for the special board meeting, we'll forego the board group agreements and we'll go straight to item eight, Reports. MUSD Student Participation Data, Chen Song, Director of Tech Services.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Chen Song, I'm the Director of Technology here in Milpitas Unified School District. And we're just going to provide you with an update on the participation regarding the data that we've been capturing since October. So it encompasses a total of 73 days, and then I'll walk you through the rationale of how it began and why we're capturing the data, and just give you some real factual numbers on what we've captured so far. So let me go ahead and enable my presentation and show my screen. All right. Can you guys see the participation update? All right. Okay, so it all began with SB 98. That's the Senate Bill 98 that was passed on June 29 of 2020. So although it's a budget bill, there's some requirements regarding distance learning and in-person instruction and how we should capture that data. So it requires us to document daily participation for each student, each school day for distance learning, and then also defines daily participation to include, although not limited to, evidence of participation in online activities, completion of regular assignments, completion of assessments, and contacts between staff and students or their families. And so participation, we have put in two measures in place, which is DLN and DLP. So DL is for distance learning, N is for not participating, and P for partial participation. And so this came out with collaboration with, with our teachers, the union, and different folks to, and the desire to capture that particular data and meet the SB 98 requirements as well as honor the teacher's professional judgment. As the, the teachers are the sole arbiter of whether that student is participating or not participating, or whether they're partially participating or fully participating. So we wanted to make it partially nuanced but not burdensome to capture this info. And so remember that participation indicator as we go through this slide set is a single indicator of many. However, over a period of time, it's a fairly good longitudinal indicator. If a student has missed out of those 73 days of capture, all 73 days, whether they have partially participated or not participated, then we know that there needs to be additional focus, and many of our teachers already do the intervention work in the class for those known students. And it's calibrated to each teacher on what their expectation for that day is. And the other piece you should know is that teachers actually have a week to go back, and if the student has asynchronously participated on that particular day, they can choose to do so. And that's one of the little star asterisks that I have to put in, as some people may not go back so that that portion of the data may not be completely accurate. However, as a longitudinal trend, it's a great indicator. And so as we began to capture this particular data, what were some of the calibration work that was done? We started entering this data in October 19th of 2020. There's one week to adjust that participation data, and we also have a full website that explains and provides examples as well as training videos on how to enter that particular piece of data for both attendance and participation. And then we also held six virtual live trainings, Q&amp;A sessions, and we And then we also held six virtual live trainings, Q and A sessions, and we had about two thirds of the uh staff participate. Our teachers. And then uh there are additional notes sent out on the LND and principal notes to staff. Um, and families were updated uh on why these changes are being made and what those indicators uh mean via parent square. And we continue to provide that particular support through workplace Q and A, help desk, phone, and through email. Uh, so let's go ahead and go through like the big data um and and in terms of funneling. Um, it's the reverse pyramid. So in our school uh schools, we currently have as of today, ten thousand four hundred and fifty one enrolled. Uh, students, and you can kind of see the breakdown I for the sake of uh time. Please feel free to read uh read this, um but it goes from Milpitas High um with thirty one sixty six students. About thirty percent of the district down to Rose and Sunny Hills CDC at hundred and eighteen. So participation that we measured was from October nineteenth of twenty twenty to February twenty six of twenty twenty one. And so uh we tried to capture it to the latest uh latest week. And there is a dashboard that is available, and I'll show you an example of that towards the end. Uh, where um you can adjust that info and look at it as as uh as principals would like. And so data was collected for seventy three school days commencing at October nineteenth, ending in February twenty six, and we captured that on a daily basis. Um, seventy one thirty four, so those are seven thousand one hundred and thirty four. Um, unduplicated students have either um not participated or have partially participated. Now, keep in mind, that that number looks large, but it could e- even be for a single instance during that seventy three days. So let's say a teacher uh marked a student uh partial participation because they missed a homework. That would count in there. So you could see that oh, almost uh uh over three thousand students have actually. Are perfect, right, in their teacher's eyes and their expectation. So you can kind of look at it in that way if you like. So sixty nine percent of the students either not have participated or partially participated. In secondary, we also look at it via periods, not just the days. So there are fifty eight thousand nine hundred and eight periods that were either not participating, which is thirty four thousand eight hundred and sixty four. Periods or partial participation, twenty four thousand forty four. Um, so each day, if you were to just simply take an average. Uh, students did not participate in an average of four hundred and eighty four periods and partially participated in three hundred and thirty four periods. Having said that. That's just an average. I'm gonna run uh through some elementary data that will actually highlight. Um, why those numbers are generated by a small subset of students. So elementary s- uh schools' participation, and this is by the number of students. So let's just uh take a look at Burnett. Um, it's at the top.
It's in.
Yes.
Hold one second. Board members, are there any, before we move to this part, are there any clarifying questions that you have about what he has presented thus far? Okay. I don't know. There's no hands or any, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
So in taking a look at Burnett, um, we have DLP. Uh, partial participation at three hundred and forty one students and not participating with hundred and fifty four students. However, um, some students participate on some days, fully participate. Partially participate on others and not participate on others. So we also look at the unique days. Or unique students, unduplicated students. So at Burnett is three hundred and fifty three unduplicated students. Out of five hundred and twenty nine enrolled students who have either partially participated or have not participated. But once again, please remember, this is over the seventy three days. So even if they miss one day, they would appear in this statistic. So uh, this is by days. How many days have our students missed? Either partial participation or not participating. So at Burnett, um, it's three thousand three hundred and twelve days of partial participation. And one thousand seven hundred and twenty seven days of not participating. And this is generated by three hundred and fifty three students having five thousand, having either partial or not participating. In five thousand thirty nine days. But you can't always look at it like this because you want to see what is the magnitude. Um, and who has missed these particular uh classes or their teachers might be. Indicating uh who may be missing a lot of uh a lot of their uh learning opportunities. So at Burnett. There's twenty three students who are missing sixty or more days. So this is sixty days to seventy three days. But these twenty three students are generating one thousand four hundred and fifty eight days. Um, of partial participation or no participation. Forty to fifty nine uh days, as indicated by teachers, twenty three T uh students. Are generating eleven hundred and forty three days. Forty two students who are generating eleven hundred and thirty nine days have missed twenty to thirty nine days. So take a look at these three numbers, right, as the as the Pareto principle, the eighty twenty rule, right? Twenty percent of your students generate eighty percent of the days that are missed. So these are some of the indicators um that our principals um will uh will bring back. Of the state of the uh district on the twenty third, um and will help them generate this info. Um, another way to take a look at this is to take a look at the distribution of that participation. And every blue bar is a student. It's either days, DLP, or DLN, partial participation, or not participating. So you could see out of Spangler. There are students who have missed full seventy three days all the way down to one. But visually, you can kind of see where the students are on that distribution curve. And most of our schools' uh distribution curves look something like this, right? So you have students who have missed many days, followed by many students who have missed a few days for whatever reason. And please remember, this could be uh because they didn't have uh internet access for that day. And they couldn't get on synchronous asynchronous and never made the um never made the assignment up. Um, to, they were sick on that day, um, or it could be at the uh at the whim of. You know, whatever happened, whether it be fires or they had some emergencies, so they could have missed those days. But notice the students on your left, right? So those are students who we really need to have a pulse on as they've missed way too many days. As a teacher, um, when the students started missing uh five or more of of my classes or weren't participating in my lessons. There were uh, there were some red flags that went on and and interventions started to happen. Let's take a look at the secondary schools uh and their numbers on DLN and DLP. Um, Milpitas High is at twenty five eighteen, uh Russell, seven hundred and twenty nine students, Rantow, five hundred and ninety seven. And Calhills at one twelve. And if you take a look at Russell, it's almost. At some point, a kid missed one day of something, according to the teacher, right? Um, but once again, it's the eighty twenty rule. You'll have twenty percent of the kids generating a lot of data. Having said that. If you take a look at it from a global perspective, in secondary, fifty eight thousand nine hundred and eight periods were either DLN or DLP. So thirty four thousand eight hundred and sixty four periods um were missed by our students. And not participating at all. So where does this come from? This comes from our participation dashboard, um and this is a uh a live dashboard. That our principals can manipulate. Um, they can click it through school. Uh, they can click it through grade, uh by teachers, uh by students. Um, whether it be by unique students or by periods in secondary. Uh, we try to make it uh more helpful uh every iteration that we have. Um, this is a uh a tool that um that we look at in terms of. You know, here is a large set of info, and then how do we drill down to get the more poignant info? Uh, for that particular school and their context. And so uh this is what it looks like in the secondary school and data as of current of two twenty six. And you can see that the grand total of the unique students that have uh either partially participated. Or not participated as indicated here. And as we click through different options, um, the funnel narrows. Um, so you can get it, get to a more targeted info. And then for the elementary school, um, the same, and the bottom chart um kind of gives us an indicator. Uh, for which days uh may have a spike. But uh we found that this uh to be uh not as helpful at this point because uh on Wednesdays. We oftentimes uh don't have as many classes, and you can see that's why in the secondary schools it plummets. So we'll probably replace this with another graph that is much more helpful to our leaders. So that is the presentation on participation data. Are there any questions?
Hey, Chen, uh, thanks for the presentation. Uh, you mentioned that that the site leaders had access to it. Remind me, the, do the teachers have access to their individual students uh from a data or the, do they have to go to the site there to get their information?
So they actually are the ones who are inputting this info, and they can uh get that on Aries. All this is pulled from our uh our student information system.
So so in turn, the the teachers have access to create or or compile the data after they entered it to for simplicity. Some uh either simplicity.
Yeah, so they just go to the link and then can drill down into their particular class to see. But it's my notion where, you know, most of our teachers would have that information um at their fingertips. Because out of my elementary students of uh, you know, thirty thirty kids or so. The four or five that continually spike, right, um would be at the fore forefront of of my mind.
Chen, um, thank you for the the presentation and for synthesizing the information. In in a way that was palatable. For the board, um at least hopefully for the board. Um, I was able to think, I was able to track with most of it. And I think what happened for me more than anything is that it prompted some questions and. Because data can be created a number of different ways and tell a number of different stories. And the the story that you tended to, the story that this, the way that this data was presented, told told me a couple of things. It said um. That um the teachers know their students best. And the 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 teachers um went through um. A a different type of. Calibration experience with their students, because usually they take attendance. That's the one, and they turn that in, and then they can see the attendance. But in this instance, they not only did attendance, but they also had to kind of measure participation. Which was one more thing that was added to their plate.
Correct.
And in addition to attendance and then measuring participation, then determining how to use that participation information. To share it with the folks that could get them potentially the additional support. For the students that weren't able to participate. It's one thing for a kid not to be able to come to school. It's another thing for a kid not to be able to turn on his camera, or he doesn't have internet. Or in a, in a lot of what I saw in that information, just come and told some of the story about. How devastating the pandemic has been. Without a correlation to seeing like comparison to attendance. Or um even calibrating it in comparison to last year, because it's not, we don't have a, we don't have a comparison to. We just have what we've done this year and learned how to do. Um, with a, with a, a self rubric to a certain extent. So um. I know that as we, as we work towards um school coming back. Um, and what I mean by coming back is not. Using the campuses, well, because our schools never closed, we've used the campuses. And as uh the gentleman said earlier, there's nothing like a teacher um in person with a kid that makes a difference. Um, which I think everybody agrees with. I would ask the question. When the students, when the teachers are making the selection, or I would be interested in seeing when the, when the selection is made without interfering with student data. To see if it, the students that did not participate and weren't engaged. Will they be the same students that get selected in the first tier of when schools come back? Because that would be a metric of of saying of what that tool actually, the. The potential future of the tool in comparison to this moment in time. Is there a plan for, because it seems like from that tool, you should be able to identify the students that potentially may be in the first tier?
Well, the the interesting part is this uh analogy that I'd like to give is, you know, being on a team. Um, whether it's, you know, football, basketball, baseball, um, you can attend, right? You can attend, be a part of the team, but do you actually play? And so this is uh if the teachers or the coaches, they're essentially saying, did they play or did they practice to my expectation? Um, they kind of slack off today, or did they uh just, they were there, but they didn't do anything, right? And we all know with a growth mindset and the growth exercise that it's all about practice, right? And so uh with uh in respect of your question, we're thinking about where it fits in on our continuum. And and it it'll be an evolving uh indicator. But it's primarily designed to ask questions, right? Especially at the thirty thousand foot level of saying, why might there be uh fifty eight thousand periods? Uh, our students have missed, and how can we potentially close some of that opportunity gap of just simply bringing them back? It doesn't measure academic progress, but it's a proxy for did they practice to be there.
But I I just my own personal opinion, I I think I I understand what you're saying, but that that's a short sighted approach to the tool. Because it is, it's, it, it does more than. When when you think about everything that the teachers have done, when you think about what the families have gone through, when you think about all the variables in between. Between the internet, the the computer, and all those other things. It it's not highlighting, or it it doesn't, it doesn't reveal um. The, the wins, the, the, the positives, the. It it it's almost like a a critical look at um. What, what we know is happening versus being able to also say. Here is what, here is, here's something that we can measure and then determine what we can do with it. That um that improves our overall academic or our learning practices. Because I, we all know that all teachers want their kids to be there, but again, whether it's on screen or off screen, you know, those types of things. There are just too many variables um to be measured in a way that um. that does that tool justice. I, I think there's something there, but I can't without kind of, I need to hear from a, is there a principal who can talk about this tool or that has used this tool at all? That's available to, to share?
Pretty sure Nicole is in the webinar side of this.
Yeah, and I mean, I can share a little bit, to be honest. We, we don't use this tool very much just because of what Chin said, the teachers know who their kids are. So as we do check-ins with grade levels and teachers, at least at my site, where, and I think at many others, you know, we, we talk to them about who the kids are, who has not been participating, who is partially participating? What does partial participation mean, right? Because like he said, it could be the one assignment didn't get turned in, but you're seeing that number in there. And for others, it's, it's more, you know, they have way more challenges and that's why they're not participating or partially participating. But yeah, I think at all of our sites, we know who those kids are. And we are putting things into place and have been since the start of school to try and, and meet their needs and get them to a higher level of participation.
Thank you for that. Lori brought up a great point. And one of the points that she made up is that everything is measured equally. And Chin, you said that very subtly. But one assignment getting and the teacher saying that the, a full do not participate versus the kid wasn't there or was only there because of an internet outage. It, it's an odd, everything is measured equally. Thank you. Thank you for that, Lori. Appreciate it.
Let me just show or share this one particular piece, if I may. This is a reflection of one student and, and just because of the data work itself is, is, is challenging to put out data like this. But this is something that we've been working on to see whether a visualization of, of something like this might help kind of interpret, you know, where we are with, with the student. So this particular student has a D L N and D L P of total of forty four. But you could see since October of, of October nineteenth of twenty twenty, that the, the gap of whether they participated or not participated, the red is accumulation of the D L Ps. And the blue line is an accumulation of D L N, not participating. And the green line is the total. There, there is no doubt that you could see that till today, there is quite a bit of learning loss there somewhere, right? Because they weren't participating. Now, having said that, you know, if I was a statistician, there may be this one-off student because he didn't participate, allow them to study something else and, and have blossomed in other ways, right? But for the most part, when you see the gap visualized this way, when the teacher is, is saying that for whatever reason, they didn't participate, it's participation or lack of participation stacking over a period of time where it spreads to forty four cumulative days of partial and not participating. So this is something that we're working towards and, and I thought, you know, perhaps it would show you to see what, you know, what we might be working on.
Thank you. Do we have any other?
Sorry, can, it just might be interesting to see too. I mean, as we look at this data, as I'm hearing everyone speak is, you know, as if we had people in class, right? And we, we don't measure every time they don't participate. We only measure if they're there or not. And there are many students who come to class and they have a bad day and they're there in physical, their being is there and they are not participating or they didn't do their homework or they're out of it for an hour or they leave early or whatever else it is. So it'd be interesting to see the comparison between if we took this kind of data, you know, because of participating or not participating when just because they're not physically there.
Yeah, so it's an indicator that we haven't captured before. So it'd be interesting like going forward. If, if that was there, you know, what might that look like? And how does that correlate with their academic progress? And please remember, this is one of many indicators that we use.
Thank you.
I also wanted to call, yes, thank you. I also just wanted to add while the, the data that Chin shared is, is usable. We really do have to dive deeply down into it in order to get to the granular, granular area in which we can actually make change. This type of data is fantastic when we're looking at our Wednesdays negatively impacting student attendance and student engagement. Because we made a big shift on our Wednesday scheduling this year. What I did want to share is taking this data that Chin, that Chin shared with us and linking it back to last year's data as well as this year's attendance data. Pomeroy this year has an attendance rate, which is different from engagement. But these are students that are logging in. We have an attendance rate of ninety eight point five nine percent. Ninety eight point five nine percent of students are attending. It gets better because last year, our attendance rate over the course of the entire year was ninety seven point five nine percent. We jumped an entire percentage point, which isn't even, I made some lofty SIPS goals, our school site plan goals. And we don't even make a goal of increasing a full percentage point. So this is attributing to our teachers, our staff are reaching out to families and building these partnerships in ways we've never done that before. And we are gaining data to support that. I'm really looking forward to the presentation on the twenty third because if you're shocked by gains of a full percentage point in attendance, you're going to love our iReady data.
Wow. This is, this is how we work through this together and we get this understanding and, and these different voices. So I, I appreciate that. Nicole, for you, you sharing that. Are there, and Lori, thank you because you inspire me to realize that, that, that the calibration of all the different things, you know, the kid doesn't complete an assignment, that gets a whole point versus not being available, that gets a whole point. And, and so there's some, there's some things there. And I'm thankful for the both of you even pursuing this approach around using data to build practice or culture that is just not objective, because sometimes we, we get caught in a moment and we don't. And sometimes there's been a lot of moments this year. So thank you for that. Are there any other comments from any principals that want to chime in on this particular topic?
I wanted to get down one case from the secondary side, which is one of the ways that we look at this data is to compare it to our attendance list and see are the kids that are D L N or D O P is primarily geared to actually not attending a class at all as well as diving into the individual students. Because there is a way that you can see the D O P, the, I'm sorry, the D L N data did not participate from greatest to least. And that, that tells us who are the most disengaged students in our school and that is very valuable information. And we use that to prioritize our interventions, our home visits, things of that nature.
Thank you. So I guess I heard that this is going to be a part of some portion of this is going to be a part or from a different perspective on the twenty third. Superintendent Jordan?
Yes, we have other data points to share on the twenty third in addition to this data point. And we will share this as well. And as Director Song pointed out, this tool is one of several tools that could be used by the principals and also by the district leaders to get a snapshot of what's happening at a school or across the district on a given day or on a week. And also the other piece is, it's a tool that when Carl said that he can go dive into what is the pattern with a student, that allows the secondary to see that if there's a student that has a pattern of low participation in several classes, that's another data point of how to help that student. And you asked at the beginning of the presentation, how is this? Or is this data tool set something that can be used as we determine the tiers of students? And the answer is yes. It's also a conversation piece that teachers can have with themselves as to how I determine what participation is compared to how you can determine what participation is and how it can calibrate when we do our professional learning communities.
Understood.
But one other piece that I want us to recognize is data is something not to be fearful of. And I, I can tell you, because this is a new data set. And because it looks, as you pointed out, it looks like it's highlighting everything that's not working. Unless we step back and put it into context, then we hesitate to use it because we don't understand it. And because we look at it, we may look at it as a judgment tool rather than a tool of information. And that's how it needs to be regarded is another data tool for information.
Thank you. And that's, as a board member, that's how I took it as a piece of information that is, that, that it has, has potential to be helpful at certain levels. I don't, I'm not sure if it's a tool for everybody in the district. I think it could be helpful to certain groups and, and informative. So thank you, Lori and Nicole for sharing. Thank you, Chin, for the presentation on the direct, the student data. And thank you, Jackie, who's hiding in the background and letting Chin do all the talking, knowing that you also are a part of helping to make this happen in Milpitas Unified School District. Next item on for reports is number two, M U S D Association leaders share experiences in teaching, learning and working in a pandemic. Presenters, Diane Orlando. Okay, in this instance, we're going to use your title, not just going to use your title. Instead, Milpitas Teachers Association President, and then also Michelle Kessinger. Is it Michelle Kessinger or Kessinger? I want to get that right. I couldn't, couldn't hear you.
Kessinger.
Kessinger, Classified School Employees Association, Chapter Two Eighty One President, and Lori Amino, Milpitas Management Association President. Are we going in alphabetical order or are we going in the list that's said here? What are we doing?
Let's start with our C I C A president.
Oh, I think Diana should go first.
All right.
She doesn't like to follow me for some reason. I don't know.
You're right, Michelle. I don't like to follow you because you always do such a good job. So, thank you, Chris and everyone. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Jordan, Executive Cabinet and the public. My name is Diane Orlando. I'm a second grade teacher at Pomeroy and president of the Milpitas Teachers Association. When I was asked to speak tonight, I almost said no. But then I realized that this was my time to share my personal feelings as well as my feelings as the president. March twenty twenty to today has been one of the hardest and trying years I've seen in my fifty eight years. March saw us from going in-person learning to online. I'm not a tech savvy teacher, so it was very hard for me, but I did it and got better at it with each, each time I tried something new. In April, COVID almost succeeded in taking my big brother, who is like a father to me. Thankfully, with great medical help, a ton of prayers, lots of good energy and his stubbornness, COVID lost. And we still have my brother Pete. Mind you, his life has, has been changed dramatically. He is now doing dialysis three days a week because of COVID. We dodged a huge bullet by not losing him. He is a leader of our family. We all looked forward to the summer thinking life would get back to normal. Wow, were we wrong. Instead of a family trip to Hawaii, I found myself working almost every day to plan for August. It was exhausting. But together with the district, we had a plan in place and I was ready to start year thirty four. The beginning of school was tough, not because I wasn't prepared, because I spent the summer also doing professional development, so I wouldn't let my twenty four, seven-year-olds down. It was tough because I knew I wouldn't be greeting my students at my door. School started and my twenty four little second graders and I bonded. Yes, we even bonded over Zoom. We laugh, we cry sometimes and we have fun. My students keep me going every single day. When I think of hearing the word learning loss, it angers me because I don't think my students have lost. In fact, I think this is probably one of the best years I've had, teaching math especially. They are dynamite and maybe they're just a super bright set of kids. I don't know, but I don't think they've lost any learning. When I don't have, I don't think I have anything else to give, they remind me I do. They remind me not to give up. They remind me to persevere. They are the reason I chose to be a teacher. October sucked. We lost our sister-in-law. A short three and a half weeks after she was diagnosed with cancer, she was fifty eight years young. If I ever wanted to quit, it was then. However, personally and professionally, I pushed on with the help of my students, family and colleagues. I need to give a huge thanks to my team, Abby Palin, Terry Lawrence and Vicki Ramirez. Without them, I would have drowned and I would have put in for my retirement for this June. I owe them so much, I can't even put it into words. As president of M T A, sorry. We is, is distance learning perfect? Hell no. But we are making a difference and our kids are learning. Milpitas teachers want to return to school when we feel safe enough to do so. As president of M T A, I want to thank the five hundred and fifty plus teachers that stepped up to the plate and in my opinion have hit grand slams. Last March, we were heroes. And now the public and some administrators in other districts see teachers in our unions as villains. We are not. Everything that was developed was done by teachers and staff on their own time. We didn't get paid to help plan for August. We just did it. We didn't get paid to attend, take classes all summer long. We just did it. We did it because we owe it to our students. Teachers and staff give and give and it needs to be recognized. I have two quotes from fellow teachers. The first wishes to stay anonymous. This is, this is from a third grade teacher. Since March thirteenth, twenty twenty, life in the third grade classroom has been very different. An overall surprise was that a few students who struggled with all the normal distractions of a classroom actually thrived from home. This was true mainly because parents were available to support learning environments, oversee schedules and follow through both communicating regularly with the teacher and encouraging the student to make the adjustments necessary. As a teacher, I found the first two months to be challenging due to the need to learn and integrate new technology. P T A supported us in August with a grant which I used to buy a second monitor. My person, my principal secured new desk chairs. My person, my principal secured new desk chairs and colleagues shared the technologies and applications that they were using. That were engaging and useful. Sitting all day with more sitting at night to correct all the work has proven not to be a good thing. Hands developing arthritis, back pain is a more regular thing. My vision is blurrier and I get more frequent frequently irritated because of exaggerated screen time. And need to follow up with all things school related on the screens. I used to move all day in the classroom. I used to be able to read the body language of children coming in. From recess in their daily groupings and work and I could attend to more than more than their academics. Not so true now. Some students have lost interest in school, especially the most proficient. They need the social interaction so much and yet both students and colleagues, though tired and leveraging a variety of degrees of stress. Are hanging in there. We are resilient. We are dedicated. And it is extremely challenging to teach little learners online every day for months on end. We have all lost something. I'm not sure. I'm excuse me, I am sure we are also gaining something. Perhaps hindsight will be a more clear, will be more clear and give us those answers. And then I have a statement from Stephanie Woodhams, who teaches at Russell Middle School. Sorry.
There's no apologies here. There's no need to apologize. This isn't easy.
It's on my phone and then I got a text, so it lost. I lost it. Okay, sorry. Teaching this year is like doing a podcast to a live audience that we also have to teach and make sure they perform well. We hype and encourage our students each day to try and keep them engaged and wanting to join classes. While also teaching new information and connecting emotionally. And providing to our struggling students, all while we ourselves are living in a pandemic with our own stresses and emotional needs. Thank you, Stephanie. In closing. M U S T teachers will continue to work hard for our students and for each other. I am so proud of all of our teachers and honored to not only be their colleague, but their president. Stand tall, M U S teachers. You are doing an amazing job. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you for always giving us your heart.
Thank you, Diana. And sorry to hear about your brother. But. I I'm very happy to hear that he's okay. He won and Covid lost to that. You know, this is a tough time to everyone. So I'm with you. Stand tall, be strong. We'll get over this soon.
Thank you, Han.
Diana, thank you for sharing. I'm sorry for your loss and the challenges you're going through. Just know that you are greatly appreciated and we thank you for your dedication.
Thanks, Kelly. That's that's all our teachers really, to be honest, not just me.
All the teachers, of course. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Diana, thank you for for coming on and speaking to us. What I really heard, though, is that there's an opportunity to take what we've experienced, both. The addition of parent engagement through distance learning, the addition of the professional development, the teachers really had to accelerate this year. Just to be able to do distance learning, but you know, pairing that with the data that Chin presented. There's a lot that can foster as we move forward and presenting how we educate the children in the district. For better or worse, there there are things that will come out to your to your point in hindsight. That that without this, we wouldn't have the opportunity to really push forward. In the new generation of teaching students. Based on the new skill sets that each teacher is providing and at the same time, how families and students. Figure out how to become more engaged and that's the word I see will use more than versus the A's, B's, C's, the gradient schedule. It's really about how is the student progressing and how are they engaging, right? And how are they progressing to be the best that they can be? So really, thank you for that.
Thanks, man.
Diana, thank you for sharing your the struggles of the teachers. And I sincerely offer my condolences for what's been going on inside your family. And I know for for a lot of people worrying about their health, you know, it's a it's a huge burden. And I do want to recognize our teachers who have really stepped up to the plate to adapt to distance learning and are doing the best they can under. Difficult circumstances. And I certainly, I would never want to put anyone in a situation where they feel like their their own physical health is at risk. Or the physical health of their household. We'll make sure everyone's safe.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, board members, for letting the all those in the audience. Watching via YouTube or even on Zoom, understand how we have governed. As a board team over this past year. We've we've all listened to the heartbeat of the community. We've tried to give the teachers as much space as they possibly as they could, as they needed. We brought community organizations in to help provide P P E and as many things as possible. In support of this incredible time because they teachers have sacrificed a lot. And you know, as I as I watch what happens out there on social media and other districts and and things like that, I I know it's extremely difficult. To block out some of the things that are being said, but in in Milpitas. We just want the the leaders of the district and the association leaders to be able to communicate effectively about what we do here in Milpitas. Each of you, all of you know that you are that close to the discussion and the opportunity and the learning. We've learned to agree to disagree. We that's that's what we do together. And I'm going to conclude with this. The. What you said, Diana, touches on many of the teachers. They had some sort of your experience. So you telling your story. It it resonated with a number of teachers that are out there as well that experienced one or more of the things that you went through. So. Thank you for being personal with us and making it extremely difficult for Lori and Michelle to follow you this time.
They're both amazing leaders and women. They'll be fine. Thank you, Chris.
Neither one of them would jump in to go next.
I'll go. Thanks, Diana, for having me follow you this time.
You're welcome, my friend.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President Norwood, members of the board, Superintendent Jordan, members of the cabinet and the public. As I think about about the past year and the trials that we have faced, not only as a district, as a community, I'm encouraged by the strength and resilience. And our M U S D community has demonstrated. We together, each one of us have turned our challenges into opportunities to find ways to connect, to teach, to learn. To just be present in this moment of time of uncertainty, we have proven to be a culture of we. I've always asked myself, what does that mean? It's simple to say, it's simple to understand, but really, what does that look like? I keep asking myself. I've seen the culture of we in action from the beginning of this pandemic when we faced a shutdown of our schools. And a community not knowing what was to come next. We found ways to communicate by using platforms that were offered so we may continue to engage in conversations. Of what was to come next, platforms that many of us never heard of or dreamed of using. But we learned, explored and did just that. We gathered as a team to explore the challenges that we faced together. We found ways to overcome those challenges. And we gave which gave us new opportunities to grow as a district. We've learned that our voices mattered, that our input was valuable and that our needs were not unique, but rather quite opposite. We became comfortable enough to share most vulnerable moments of weakness. The fear of the unknown and the fear of failure and the fear of what was to come next. We met those challenges head on and we continued to do this as a team. We agreed to disagree many, many times. And put aside our own wants and needs and we listened. And we were heard. What does the culture of we look like? I can say that this past month has showed me the culture of we. On January 23rd, the love of my life. Came home. From a six-month stay at Stanford Hospital, knowing that he did not have much time to live. In fact, he lived two weeks and five days and passed away peacefully on February 9. During that time, I can say that he felt so loved by our M U S D family and community. Over 100 of our family members from M U S D and people from all over the community drove by to send their love and prayers to Scott. The meals that were brought every day for two weeks and the support has shown me that we is what we are about. I am so blessed to be part of this family. Thank you for loving us in so many ways. Scott is now at peace, in no pain and will continue. And I will continue to be part of this wonderful we family. But with a new perspective of what that really means. I'm happy to say that. Two eighty-one has started a scholarship fund in Scott's name for students. Called the Scott Salay Vocations, students and classified members who want to continue their education and a vocational trade. Scott would be so proud of this and I want to thank you all for your unwavering display of the culture of we. As I close, I want to remind you all that classified workers haven't stopped working. We're just doing it in a different way. Teachers haven't stopped teaching. They're just doing it in a different way. We kept the wheels on the bus going around and round, as Cheryl would say. We kept our campuses cleaned, our students have been fed, our children have been enrolled. Our chromics have been handed out, our grounds have been taken care of. Paraprofessionals have been supporting teachers. It's just business as usual, but just in a different way. I am so, so proud of our classified staff for their continuing support going into their offices, going into their workplace. Yes, we've been scared half to death because we are uncertain of what's to come. But they've done it because that's what we need to do to keep our schools running. We care about our students. We care about our community. And I am so, so proud to be part of this M U S D culture of we family. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, for for sharing your story. It's just evident with both in you and Diana, as far as the personal stories during this pandemic. You know, I'm sure many of the community have their own personal stories of tragic loss due to the pandemic. And you know, in essence, though, the the will to continue and the will to to keep our schools prepared. And ready for the for the day that, you know, all our students can be back on campus together. Really is just absolutely incredible task to move forward, you know. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Michelle, for sharing. And you know, I do want to thank all of our classified employees and service workers for really stepping up despite. All the fear and uncertainty and the risk. Again, I'm very. Sorry about loss of your loved ones and it's it's something that many people are suffering and. And listen to your words. I just think that, you know, as bad as as bad as things are. As long as we have each other as one community to support each other during times of tragedy, we can get through this. So thank you again for sharing.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle, for sharing. Good seeing you back here again with us. We missed you for a couple of weeks there. I'm sorry again for your loss and. I don't know what else to say to you and Diana, just looking into tears and. Let's be strong.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm amazed by your strength and resilience as I am with Diana's. You had a major loss and you know, you continue to put M U S D. You know, you continue to put your heart into M U S D and moving forward. I'm I'm so honored to be working with you. Thank you so much for all that you and the C S A team has have done during our pandemic. And I continue to pray for you. God give you the strength and comfort your heart. And if there's anything that you need, we we are here for you. We are your family. Thank you so much, Michelle.
The number of people that have probably come to you from all the different positions in the district. The areas that you pointed out that we needed to get better. Being an upstander, teaching the sharing your wisdom with all the different groups across the district and your leadership. I think. Half a million meals, Superintendent Jordan, did we reach the half a million mark?
Yes, we passed the half a million mark. We're on track to meet, make it one and a half million by the end of the year of breakfast and lunch for students.
Yes, and the campuses being. Thank you. Thank you for. Your leadership as we continue on this journey. Lori.
Right? I so should have went first.
You got the A. You we went first.
I should have went alphabetical. Yeah, and I definitely don't have anything as eloquent as both of you wonderful women and leaders have. And it's sort of hard to follow you. Obviously, us as administrators could not do what we do without. The strength of our classified and certificated members for sure. But I want to thank the board and executive cabinet and everyone who's here for giving us this opportunity. It's been a very challenging year. Personally and professionally. And after hearing these two ladies, I wasn't going to share, but it just is coming out. I lost my mother during the pandemic unexpectedly. And she did not die of Covid, but we do know that she did not go to the doctor when she was not feeling well because she wasn't going to go. And be exposed. And like many people who've lost people during this time, we still have not gathered to be able to do something for her. So sort of that happening, right? And then all of this change has been definitely professionally challenging as well. But I do have good news too, right? My grandmother is battling Covid, but we think she is over the hump. And so at 94. She is is hopefully has beat it. And so there is some positive there too. But I would say that sort of all of those extra added added stresses to all of our lives. And having to have all of this shift professionally. You know, I just want to say how proud I am of everyone and every administrator. As well as teacher and classified staff for just the amount of time and effort and love and. You know, everything we have put into this job. And I thank you for giving me us the opportunity because I have heard over time. You know, and I try and have that kind of connection with families that they don't really want to hear what's happening, what's hard for us. You know, because they're all dealing with so much in their lives as well. You know, because they're all dealing with so much in their lives as well. So it's nice to have this opportunity. In terms of school, you know, I think the same as Diana and the classified staff, we worked all summer administrators as well to try and prepare for the opening of the year. Not knowing what was happening, I think that's been the hardest thing is things are changing so quickly that we, we as administrators have to adapt. Almost daily with what we're doing and what we're communicating and changing what we're communicating and going back and revising. And that's done all the time. You know, I know our workload has definitely increased. The amount of emails and meetings that we sit in all day long. Is a lot and we do it because we want to connect with the teachers and we want to try and connect with students and we want to try to connect with the classified staff as well. And I think, you know, that's the challenge we're trying to overcome is having that connection and finding the way to do that when we don't get to pass in the hallway or see kids on the. The playgrounds or those kinds of things, but we have done it. We have, teachers have and administrators have figured out ways, whether through assemblies or field trips or, you know, I do a monthly book reading and do a raffle and go to kids' houses with prizes. We're all trying to find those ways to sort of connect with families and students. Even though we're on distance learning and Diana said it well when she said, you know, it makes her mad when people say that there's learning loss. And I've had many parents tell me that distance learning is not working for anyone. But as, you know, we know and what Nicole said earlier, our data is showing that kids are attending and that. We do have high participation in our assessment scores, whether it's our DRA reading scores for the little ones or our I Ready scores or other scores. The kids are performing at grade level and while we do have kids that are struggling, we are also making sure that we're doing things for those students by. Increasing the time that we're giving. So we started at the beginning of the year with a certain schedule and had a learning curve and as all of us have gotten to know kids. We have made sure to increase those synchronous minutes. We've added one-on-ones, we've added small groups, we've added check-ins, teachers are doing virtual recesses. You know, principals are doing lunch bunches. There's so many things going on to try and make their experience. As best as we can and kids are thriving. You know, a lot of kids. Who actually have challenges with in-person school, right? Whether it be the social things that they have to deal with or that not being able to focus with all the distractions. This has actually been something that we've seen them, you know, flourish now and they're coming out of their shells and being able to participate. Because during a Zoom session, the kids are muted and they unmute one at a time and are able to feel comfortable with participating and not have to speak over someone. Or try to, you know, watch what's happening with, you know, Suzie over here and being distracted. So I just wanted to say that I just commend the administrators for working with their teams at their schools for providing consistency for our students. We really have created schedules at our schools that the kids are now, they know the routine, they know what's going on, they're performing well and they are learning. They are learning and they are learning at grade level. So, you know, we couldn't do it without all of the. Teamwork that we have. I think, you know, Michelle said it well, we are, we have learned how to work together. I think we are communicating. You know, we solve our challenges and we are learning from it, but we're communicating in ways that we didn't do before. I feel like I have. More communication with teachers and grade levels than I did during the school year because of the flexibility that our schedules are now providing. And so now I'm rambling. But I just feel that. I want families to know that we do want to come in person, but not only do we want to do it safely, but we want to do it in a way that's not going to disrupt. All of the positive things that are happening right now for families. And that coming back right now to be safe means that we cannot come back five days a week for full school days. And so just thinking about how do we come back in a safe way, but also how do we come back and still provide. All of the learning opportunities that we're providing for students online. So I just say thank you to everyone. Thank you to my admin team for being out there and, you know, being a sounding board and. We're spending much more time together, planning and trying to figure out how to meet kids' needs and meet staff needs. And we really have worked hard and will continue to work hard and I think we've learned a lot like Min said about what. Good things have come out of this that we can still use as we continue to move back to in-person learning next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Come, go ahead.
No, I just want to say the sublinating of this COVID is, you know, teachers, students. Different ages. Are now tech savvy. Myself too. I've seen, I've seen a four-year-old. One-on-one with the teacher. Know how to turn on the video, know how to turn it off, know how to raise hand, know how to mute. I had to learn that. I guess from Min and Chris. So, and like Diana said, she's getting better and better at. The Zoom, the meetings now and by teaching. Online. So it's great hearing stories from Diana. Michelle and Lori. And again, sorry for. Your loved ones. I've lost my uncle last month as well. Not COVID, just old age. So let's pray for the safety of all in our district. And. Again, be strong, everyone. Thank you.
Just like to note as the board, as we share our comments with Lori, that afterward, we do have a public comment that we are going to get to. So. But I'll just jump in at this point. Lori, you are one of our senior administrators at the principal level. How many years?
Yeah, it's crazy. Seven years now and twenty-two in the district this year.
Seven, so our principals, seven years. Nancy is our, Nancy is our senior principal and then everyone else goes.
Jackie and.
So there was a super learning curve for our administrators and how to navigate all of these different things as well and. And I'm. And I'm hopeful that you guys have grown, grown even closer and found a new way to communicate with each other and build each other up in the midst of all this. So. I appreciate your leadership and working with the administrators and just being thoughtful in so many different ways and. And I did see you one time looking for a house, driving a kid a prize that they won. So I thought that was pretty special. So again, thank you for your efforts. In terms of this work and the three of you have done an amazing job and. So I'd like to yield the floor and let the other board members.
Lori, thank you so much for sharing. I'm sorry for your loss. You, Michelle, Diana are three amazing women leaders and our district is truly fortunate to have you here. And distance learning is not a one-size. It's all learning platform and I know teacher, staff, admin, your teams are working much harder because they care and love our learner so much. Everyone has contributed tirelessly. So I want to say thank you for your hard work, dedication. Just, you know, I do appreciate each and every one of you.
Yeah, Lori, I really want to just thank the whole, you know, principal team and administrators. You guys are the gateway to our families, to the district. You know, you hear everything from all the families, all the students and. On top of that, you're being absolute leaders and bringing, gathering the community, providing family engagement events, school events virtually. To, you know, as far as virtual field trips, virtual emotional circles, et cetera. So. The incredible work that you're doing and keeping the community, school communities together is just outstanding and thank you for that.
Hello, Lori. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. You know, I'm sorry about your loss. I know that, you know, whether, whether it's directly from COVID or from like, like a secondary effect, like you said, where. People were reluctant to go to the hospital because of the risk of exposure. This tragedy certainly has impacted a lot of people, whether they got COVID or not. So I'm really sorry to hear that. I do want to thank all the managers and administrators for adapting to this difficult situation and keeping things going the best they can. Despite all the uncertainty and all the challenges and, you know, you've really stepped up to. To fill the void.
So I just want to repeat, mention one more thing. Thank you to all three leaders and the teams because. Every day, every week, there's something new that's added that improves upon the education here in our district. It's not the same that it was five months ago, a year ago. It keeps improving and I really applaud that effort to continue to. Shine as best as possible for the, for the students.
Thank you, Min. Scott, can we go to the public comment and then we'll go to Superintendent Jordan?
Okay, we have Sheri Miller-Low with her hand raised. I'm gonna allow her to talk now. Sheri, you can go right ahead. Unmute yourself and.
I apologize. I accidentally raised my hand. I just want to say I feel very honored to be a part of this district. I have worked outside this district. I've been a parent in this district and I just wanted to thank Lori and Michelle and Diana for their leadership. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, are there any other public comments at this time?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Who's that? Superintendent Jordan, any comments?
Yes. Our MEIC classified team members, our teachers, our specialists, our school and district leaders care deeply. And they demonstrate their drive and sense of purpose in the way that they have given themselves to ensure our learners have the best possible school experiences in MUSD. That's what we heard tonight. We have been engaged in the greatest challenge of our professional and personal lives. And that is how do we build and deepen relationships from a distance with each other, with parents and with our students? We've invested over two hundred and sixty thousand hours in preparing, developing and retooling for our learners. We've invested thousands of hours volunteering to ensure our students and families have masks, food, wifi, hotspots. Digital devices and resources that they need for learning. We've made hundreds of home visits to follow up on learners who are not engaged or who need assistance. We've iterated MUSD Educate Everywhere three times and are preparing to launch the next version. All of this and more while keeping our eye on the future. We are a championship team. We are striving towards a world-class education. We are MUSD. And every single one of us has been drawn to the ideal of making a difference in the life of another. And especially in the life of a student. And that's what is binding us together, especially now. So thank you, everybody.
Okay. You guys read me like mushy. It's ridiculous. Item three on our agenda, MUSD graduation planning 2021.
President Norwood, I think this part will be a fun part. It's not going to be. Tears. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Norwood, members of the board, Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, members of the cabinet. Panelists joining us this evening and for those of you watching at home, good evening. My name is Greg Barnes and I have the privilege of being the Director of Learning and Development with Mill Peters Unified School District. And I'm also very fortunate this evening to be joined by our fabulous team of secondary administrators. To share with you updates and progress on a couple of different items this morning, the first being our graduation plans. And where we are with our continued work in supporting our students' learning community service hours. First up this evening is an update on our graduation plans for all of our secondary sites. And we'll start this evening with Mill Peters High School Principal Francis Rojas.
Good morning, board and executive cabinet and Mill Peters High School community. Greetings from, I'm actually in Stockton, California right now.
Did you say good morning?
Oh, good evening. I've been on a, chairing a WASC review of a high school here. So you're getting me away on a business trip. So. Long days. So an update for MUSD, MHS graduation for this class of 2021 is. We are scheduling graduation on Friday and Saturday, June fourth and fifth. With the ceremonies at the MHS stadium. The process and setup of this graduation will be very similar to last year as students and families had a very positive and close-up experience. There was overwhelming positive feedback around that format of alternative graduation ceremony. And as an admin team, we are also looking for ways to enhance that ceremony since we have more planning time. To go into June fourth and fifth. Some considerations are, you know, like our regular graduation, having. Teachers and staff read names. We weren't able to do that. Fully. Last year, but perhaps with more planning time, we can implement that with preference for name readers. Like last year, we're working with a company to produce the commemorative video. For both, for graduation and then our staff will present senior awards in a similar fashion as well. And we will have the photo files for all of our graduates' families available for free download. From a website. Our student body leadership and student government classes working on senior gifts. Which will include yard signs and grad giveaways and they are working on. Gathering ideas of what are ways that we can celebrate our seniors as they close their. Career in MUSD in a memorable and I think in a dignified fashion. So that is the update for MHS's graduation plans.
Great. Thank you, Francis. Up next is the principal of Calaveras Hills High School, Mr. Carl Stice.
Hello, Superintendent Board and Cabinet and community members. Pleasure to share with you our plans for Calaveras Hills students who are going to be graduating this year. We are shooting for, not shooting for, we are looking at a graduation ceremony on June third. Not June fourth, as is indicated here. That is a typo. And we will be looking to re-surveyed our families and our students and currently. The survey shows that over sixty percent, well, a hundred percent want a live ceremony. well, a hundred percent want a live ceremony. And over sixty percent have indicated that they would like exactly what Principal Rojas has just shared, a walk-in ceremony, similar to what M H S had last year. We will plan to do that on the M H S athletic field as it best accommodates that kind of ceremony with social distancing by, you know, several yards. And also, we'll be right here in our own backyard in M U S D. And the, you know, current graduate numbers are shown there. And we are working on senior gift ideas of also the yard signs. They were a big hit last year. And the addition of Cal Hills swag and some additional gifts that I don't want to ruin the surprise. And also having things like a photo booth for the family so that we can take individual photos of graduates as well as the family together. And that seems to be where we're leaning right now. Survey results are not in entirely, but that's where things seem to be heading.
Thanks, Carl. Our last presenter for M U S D Graduation 2021 is Mrs. Juliana Boheme, Principal of our Adult Education Program.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Jordan, Board of Trustees. This has been a very challenging year for adult bed. As many of you know, our correctional facility has been, we haven't been able to have in-person learning, and that is the reason why we are still not able to go and offer the HICE test. Having said that, our graduation numbers are going to be much smaller this year. With our students at the facility, we normally get a hundred students between our students at corrections and our students at the A R site. However, this year, due to the lack of HICE testing, it's going to be a very small graduation, which we're very proud to be presenting as per district calendar on Wednesday, June the 2nd at 5:00 in our own squad in front of the adult ed center. Also, a reminder that our adult learners can achieve their diploma by going through the Independent Studies Program and or taking the HICE test. We currently have eight students confirmed to graduate. And as the tiers of the health change from purple to red, and now we're able to open a little bit more freely our HICE testing center and start offering that test in very, very small groups. We look forward to another great year of celebration where we are not only celebrating the adult learner, but also their families as they're a great part of their success. And definitely, we look forward to having everybody there. And this year, different than last year, we will make sure that we have a guest speaker and that we, in a way, bring more community together to that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana, Francis, Carl. Thank you as well. At this point, we'll stop for a few questions.
A very quick, simple question. Is there a difference between the M H S Stadium and the M H S Athletic Field?
No, our understanding is the same that is on the graduation on the stadium grounds.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, Juliana, Carl, and Francis. I am looking forward to the graduations.
Well, we know that as, thank you for taking the opportunity to prepare this at this time in advance. I would ask that we are mindful of the fact that conditions may change in both directions and that we are prepared or we are considerate of that. If there's a way to possibly incorporate families, because there is a sense of disconnection from the students and the school experience in the past. So if there's a way to connect families and potentially as far as, you know, that want to contribute to the graduation of, for the M U S D graduations, I think that is something that allows parents and businesses that want to get involved as well. So I would like to see, Greg, how each of these organ, how each of the schools are going to incorporate the parent engagement piece as a part of the process. Although they may not be able to attend, they may be able to do something. I know that there's a Facebook group, Adopt a Senior, where different parents do things for other seniors, knowing that we're in the middle of the pandemic. I know last year that we raised funds for the graduation. So I would like to see some of those things come back sooner than later.
Absolutely. Yeah, definitely. Parent engagement piece, something we really want to make sure is part of this process. Thank you.
Item four, M U S Community Service Update 2020, 2020, 2021, Community Service Update.
So again, I have the privilege of being joined by Francis Rojas, Principal of Mill Peters High School, Carl Stice, Principal of Calaveras Hills High School, to give us an update on where we stand with community service. Mr. Rojas.
Well, good evening again. Make sure I say the right thing. I would like to thank the the school board for giving us the opportunity to go back and refine our our thoughts about the community service requirement for the class of 2021. And together with Cal Hills Principal Carl Stice and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan and Director Greg Barnes, we have come up with a plan of 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 having our seniors have a five-hour community service requirement in order to graduate. So that's a reduction from 20 hours to five hours, as well as providing a little more flexibility on what type of community service is eligible for for collection of hours, for collection of hours. So just some data points here. As of February 26th last week, out of 795 M H S seniors, we now have forty-eight percent of our seniors meeting the five-hour requirement. That was at thirty-two percent back in November with a 20-hour requirement. So we made an announcement that we're reducing it to five hours and students, some students made an immediate shift because it went from 20 to five, and they had the five hours to meet the requirement. But we also had students come forward saying, oh, I do have five hours. Let me turn that in right now. So that has increased us to forty-eight percent. Still, we have forty-six percent of our seniors with zero hours. But since November, that has also decreased. So we are having more students turning in hours. So you can see that we went from sixty-two percent with zero hours to now forty-six percent, which is a great improvement. And then we've also had an increase of from 127 students to 146 students who've reached the 100-hour mark for the maroon cord. So we are seeing that movement toward more students meeting the five-hour community service requirement and also a decrease of students that have zero hours. Our opportunities for community service are continued to be shared on our website. We are being more flexible, community service projects that are done during the school day in the normal school year, that that would not be eligible. So, for example, our Travel and Tourism Academy has been working really hard to create homeless kits to support the unhoused in our community. That is something that they're actually doing during the school day. Some of them, as part of their class, come to school to put these kits together. And activities like that from clubs and classes will be accepted toward community service, as well as tutoring that is happening. Support, we have clubs that are supporting tutoring for not only high school students, but also our elementary and middle school students. That is also being accepted for community service. The new and innovative thing that's going on is we've created a library social media team headed by, it's a collaboration between our new librarian, Joy Kim, our tech service department, Shin Song, and I think it's, is it Dr. Schmidt over at Calaveras Hills? They are working together to create a social media team, and they're starting to create projects around where students can read, record, and share with the entire community, reading projects, reading texts, similar to what we discussed at the last board meeting, to earn hours. And so we're putting that out as well. When we reach April, we're going to run the report again to see which students have still not met the five-hour community service requirement. And this is a normal practice we have during a regular school year where when students don't meet that requirement, they'll be contacted directly by counselors and APs to provide those students with additional support. Here are opportunities, please do this, so on and so forth. And then we will make sure that we bring all of our grads to 100% of reaching the five-hour requirement this year. That's the update on community service from Mill Peters High School.
Thank you, Francis. Principal Stice.
Great. Thank you. So our data is shared in a little bit different format, but essentially, it's going to get you the same information, which is that we have a larger portion of our students who have met the requirement. Out of our 61 seniors, we have 21 who are already good to go and several who are making strides and have hours that have possibly not yet been turned in. Well, not possibly, have not been turned in yet to the counselor. All of our seniors and families have been notified of the five-hour community service requirement. All teachers have reviewed this requirement in the weekly advisory announcements that they go over with their students. In addition to going over all of the opportunities that are provided, ideas, brainstorming, things that they can do to be of service to the community. And they, we have a lot of new opportunities to meet this requirement. You know, where we've really, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. So where we had this issue with so many of our kids not, you know, not meeting the requirement earlier this year and not getting those hours, we have made great strides in finding new opportunities. And I'd like to share a few of those, Scott. If you would be able to click on our website there, and I can direct you on where to go. If you could go ahead and look. There's another way to get there, but go ahead to the graduate tab at the top of the dropdown and community service. One, nope, up one. There you go. Thank you. What you see right in the front here, it's probably pretty small, is the 2021 Community Service Menu, where students can browse here. There are a number of opportunities. Like to read, create a book, read for students from Sora using Google Meet. Lions Club opportunities are on here. Exercise opportunities. Promoting, you know, while you're jogging, walking, et cetera, around the neighborhood. Promoting, wear purple, promoting cancer awareness, snap a selfie, log the amount of time that you spent. We have other opportunities for them to volunteer with community service. So, I mean, sorry, with the Lions Club. You can join a virtual Relay for Life team, if you could scroll down a little bit more. If that, yeah, that list may be.
That's all it's gonna let me do, Carl.
What's that?
That's all it's gonna let me do.
Okay, no problem. So go ahead and scroll down a little more on the page. If you'll see over, I'm sorry, over on the right toward the top, there was an opportunity or an access point for them to submit the form online. So they upload the form there, where you can see that they're going to fill out their hours there. Then if you scroll down a little bit, it just basically gives them more opportunities. We are connected also with TUPA Tobacco Use Prevention Education, and there are opportunities there where if they attend different webinars and things that are available for students, watch certain videos, and then give a synopsis of what they learned in their class, that that can be considered community service as well. And the if you scroll down a little bit further, all of the directions on how to submit, when the deadlines are, the procedures for submitting, and the criteria are all explained in depth there. So there are, it's something that I'd like to specifically thank Dr. Schmidt at Cal Hills and also Megan Benz, our Lions Club president. For, if you keep scrolling, there's even more opportunities that we've typically had on here year to year. Some of those opportunities are still available even during the pandemic. But those individuals, Megan Benz and Jimmy Schmidt, have really done an extraordinary job of keeping, keeping this community service philosophy, you know, that we have, that you really learn by doing, you know, at the forefront and finding unique and creative ways for students to continue to give. And we've seen a lot of great collaboration with Mill Peters High School. And so I'd like to thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. And that concludes our community service presentation for this evening. And once again, we'll open it up for questions.
Hi. I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to ask, or maybe have Principal Rojas. Can you share how students at M H S submit their community hours? I have a couple of families are asking for their students who have helped me with the mass project.
So I believe if you go to the community service website, it's all explained there. There are links on how to submit that through a Google form. You could also contact Marissa Canez, our College and Career Center Coordinator, who also runs our community service for that information. So that is, we've made it so you don't have to submit the papers in person. And so there is a digital way to do that now. And Marissa does apologize for not being able to be here tonight. She has a family commitment.
So would the students have to log into their M H S account?
No, it's right on right on the website.
Which website?
The M H S website. Let me.
We want to share that offline. Just send Kelly the, okay. Thank you. So if we could put that link in the chat.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you.
So I've been out at the second harvest food drive distribution at Nopitas side, basically since the start of the pandemic. I've met many MHS and Cal Hills students that come out and volunteer, weekend, week out, from that. And I appreciate those students really coming out and bringing their families. It becomes a family event. You know, the parents didn't sign up, but they stayed because it allows them to effectively connect with others trying to serve our community. And so you need students out there. You can get your three hours minimum coming out. There is a second harvest food drive this coming Saturday. It's being moved across the street to, I believe, the Russell No School from that standpoint. But a tidbit for that, there are a lot of no-shows, folks that do sign up on the website. So it's students that see the website will just come out on that morning and the coordinator will let you know if they need volunteers or not that day.
Thank you, man. Thank you, team, for the update, allowing us to make the recommendations. Thank you Superintendent Jordan for working with the Principals and Dr. Barnes and just continuing to keep the spirit of community service alive in terms of, and you understand the value of it to the board on an ongoing basis. And hopefully, we won't have this discussion again next year in any manner at all. Thank you. Adam, five, MUSD recognition of MUSD family losses during COVID-19. Superintendent Jordan? Or War Communications Specialist Scott Forstner?
Word Specialist.
So we asked our MUSD community if they would like to share and pay tribute to any family or friends that were lost during this COVID pandemic. And so I put together a video on their submissions and I'm going to play it right now. Let me just share my screen. Share sound. All right. And it was, you know, it was a pleasure to put that together to really pay tribute to those lost during the pandemic. And I will be putting the video up on our website and on our social media.
Thank you, Scott. And when you put it on the social media, people can continue to add to it through June.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that direction Superintendent Jordan, that there is more, there may be more stories to add. And we put that invitation out. That was, we recognize who we are. That's family. Thank you for that. Data Future Board Meetings, March 9th. 5:00 PM study session, 6:00 PM closed session, 7:00 PM open session via Zoom. March 23rd, study session, 5:00 PM closed session, 6:00 PM open session, 7:00 PM. April 27th, study session. 6:00 PM closed session, 7:00 PM open session. Adam 10, announcements and reminders from the board members. Seeing none, I would like to.
Oh, I.
Go ahead, Michael.
So people have been talking to me about a different school board in Northern California recently where they all had to resign because they got caught having a very disparaging attitude towards the parents. Want to say that I don't think the attitudes they displayed were acceptable at all. And for the record, I'm glad they resigned. And I hope that school district can move forward with a new board.
Okay.
That's all.
I'm looking at the dates of future board meetings as the tiered, as the tier changes, I would like for us to be able to investigate when we would be able to come back together in a board meeting, in the boardroom. It may not be with an audience, but then also evaluating because now there are indoor church services, 25%. There are a number of things that are allowing opening up and being able to happen. We've heard from our educators and our community in terms of what they've been doing. I would like for us to be able to support them in that way and us to look to also set an example with that. The other announcement that I like to is, thank you for safety team for finding ways or creating opportunities or avenues for those that within the district that would like to get vaccinated, making it happen on behalf of the MUSD team. And board members do fall under the category of being involved in educators, so you're able to participate in that as well. So kudos to that. And we'll continue working on MUSD being a vaccination site in the city of Nopitas if that possibility presents itself. And those are the announcements and reminders that I have at this time. With that said.
Great job, everybody.
They safe, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good thing.